Our regular meeting is August 24th. It is 6:30 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will begin with the pledge. And Dolores will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong? Councilmember Strong?
Manage your cursor along about two inches from the bottom of your screen and it should highlight. I see you trying to find it. She's clearly present if you want to go ahead and continue, Dolores.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Present.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Present. All right, if you're not speaking, please make sure that you stay muted. I see a few people on the sidebar. Their names are lining up because you're Jerry Ward, I believe you're one of them. If you could mute your, click your mute button, that would be great. We are to the portion of the meeting where we have public communication. So the city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council, to expedite matters and avoid repetition. Whenever any group or persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoints a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commissions, boards, and agencies will not be committed. The city council cannot take action. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to a matter that is not on the agenda? All right, having heard none, we're going to move on to public matters. Our first matter before us will be the Little Lake Fire Department. Fire Chief Carter is going to give us an update. Welcome.
Hello, thank you guys. Good evening. Am I coming through okay on the volume? Good. Yeah, so just a few things here. I want to start off with our calls to service so far this year. We are at 355 calls as of the end of July. We've had most of the calls this month, I don't have numbers for you, I apologize, but through the end of July, 355. We did have the lightning event that came through. With help of CalFire, we did have units staged around the county in anticipation of that event, and we were fortunate. Locally and close to us didn't really feel any effect of the lightning. They did hit it up north counties and east of us. So we were fortunate there. Looking ahead at the seven-day fire weather forecast, we're still in a moderate fire weather pattern, but we're not seeing any significant wind or lightning, anything like that to drive those fuels and heavy emissions, nothing like that. Hopefully it stays that way. We are actively working on our substation. You'll probably see some stuff going on around there. We've got some gutter work going on there. And we're also converting our classroom back into a classroom. You know, it was our district office for a couple of years during the construction of a new firehouse. We're converting it back into our training center. It's pretty exciting to get that thing up and running again. We do train here at the new house too, but that's a little more on-ground training, hands-on training. Be nice to have access to that again. We're also implementing a new pre-planned program. If you're not familiar with pre-plans, you know, we pre-plan commercial structures and some larger residents. Gives us first-time seeing, first insight, you know, what's there, what to expect, where the utilities are, things like that. To this point, that's all been paper-bound, stuck at the station. You have to come here and get it, dig through it, and go that route. Takes time. The new program's digital. We'll be able to access this firsthand off our tablets or our cell phones. It's pretty exciting as well. You will see firefighters, I put a little blast on our Facebook page. Firefighters will be going around commercial structures, taking pictures, asking questions. I know it takes some time to implement that program, but it is, it is exciting and it's going to be a great tool for us. As far as any questions for me or anything like that, it's about all I've got this evening. I'm welcome to answer any questions I can.
All right. Any questions for Fire Chief Carter? No. We are, we are very pleased that you came this evening. It's good to see you here, and we look forward to any important updates, any educational pieces on what the public needs to know as we move further into this fire season. And we appreciate all the work that the men and women over at our firehouse are doing. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, and I am working to get you guys a good report and see what you guys want to hear and try to bring you, you know, local things that may affect us directly. So anything you guys can throw at me that I can work on, that you'd like to hear, just let me know, and I'll try to bring that forward to you.
I just had one thing that came to mind. The county put forward this sales tax.
Go ahead, Dolores.
Yes, and we have heard from some of our constituents that they'd like to know how you foresee that impacting our fire department here locally. So that might be something next month, or if you feel free, talk now.
So I'll tell you, we are currently working towards Measure B, and we are looking forward to that. We really hope that we get support on that. It really will do us a due service and maybe hold back some things that we might need to do as far as assessment fee increases, things like that. We're hoping this is a program that moves forward. I am working with the Mendocino County Fire Safety Council to bring you some information next month at the 28th meeting, and we'll have more insight into that. I'd like to hold that, to that for now until we're on the same page and we bring you a good package.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Any other questions for council? Anybody from the public? Okay, thank you, Fire Chief Carter.
All right, thank you.
All right. The next matter we have before us is a discussion regarding the proposed addition of Chapter 8.26 of the Willets Municipal Code. Chapter 8.26 repeals Chapter 8.24 to revise the licensing of tobacco retailers. The city council may decide to proceed to formally introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading at a subsequent meeting. Who would like to address council first on this matter?
I would, Mayor Rodriguez.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I hope you can all hear me. My name is Karen Oslin, and I am a 30-year resident of Willets. I've served on the Mendocino County Tobacco Coalition for about four years. We're a group of community members committed to keeping as many of our kids as possible free of nicotine addiction and safe from the harms of tobacco use. Now, I see the effects of smoking and tobacco every day during my work as the Executive Director of the Cancer Resource Centers of Mendocino County. Tobacco is the leading cause of preventable death in the United States, and about 20% of cancers are related to smoking. It's an honor and a privilege to serve those with cancer, but as someone who sees this every day, the effects of people's lives, I will do whatever I can to help today's youth avoid cancer tomorrow. The city's current tobacco retail licensing ordinance was adopted in 2001, back when I was a member of the city council, back before vaping was even invented. The ordinance adopted back then defines a tobacco product as "any substance containing tobacco leaf." Yet today's nicotine product of choice among our youth contains no leaf at all, but a liquefied version of nicotine concentrated to bring about swift addiction. The addictive and poisonous nature of nicotine to adolescent brain development is well documented, and good facts about this can be found in the Surgeon General's Report on E-cigarette Use Among Youth and Young Adults. Now, big tobacco companies must addict the young in order to ensure they have consumers for their products in the decades to come. And it's the responsibility of the adults in charge to interrupt this cycle. Flavored tobacco is made for and marketed to children. Candy flavors mask the natural harshness of tobacco and help kids get started. Flavored tobacco products have been removed from shops in many cities and counties, including our own county of Mendocino. Surely we want to be one of the towns that says "not here." The City of Willets Tobacco Licensing Ordinance is over 20 years old, and it's time for an update. All of the progress that's been made in the United States to reduce smoking throughout the '70s and '80s and '90s was made by concerned citizens committed, like the people here tonight at this meeting. They worked hard, and they organized, they agitated, they educated, and we have reduced smoking in the United States, and there has been progress against cancer. But keeping nicotine out of the hands of kids should be everybody's concern, and this new threat of vaping and flavored nicotine fluids and tobacco is addicting many thousands of our children. We are backsliding, and we need to take action. We do this by working together. I would like to call next on Greg Dameron, who is here, and he has some statistics on a recent buying survey. I believe he has some new information for you tonight.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Willet's City Council. My name is Greg Dameron, and I support Tobacco-Free North Coast, the Mendocino Coalition, and I'm also involved in two other county coalitions regionally. I am sharing about a recent purchase survey that was done. The state of California enacts purchase surveys all across the state, and these surveys are non-law enforcement operations, so they're not STINGS. There's not a peace officer present to provide citations like you might get with a shoulder tap operation or an alcohol decoy operation. These purchase surveys are meant for educational purposes, but also to counter the tobacco industry's propaganda. So federal and state tobacco prevention laws are minimally enforced. A city like Willets might see an operation, an undercover operation happen by the feds or the state once every five years, maybe once every 10 years, and often not even involving an undercover miner or undercover purchaser. So the state of California enacts purchase surveys that are educational operations. So the state's buying rate, or the sales rates to underage purchasers in California is about 17.9%. We conducted a survey in the city of Willets in May, and five out of 14 stores sold to an undercover volunteer teenager. That teenager presented their valid ID if asked, and three of the four smoke shops in town sold to this undercover purchaser. So the Willets rate is about 35.5, I think, or 35.7, so almost twice the state average, which sort of makes sense if you think of how much the density of retailers per person in the city of Willets is drastically high. So you have a high density of retailers, very close to schools in some cases, and so this is to counter the tobacco industry's propaganda that I'm sure you've even heard from, and we might hear from tonight, I'm not sure if they're here, that cites that tobacco retailers are really good actors, they get almost straight A's when it comes to compliance. It's actually not the case statewide or unfortunately in Willets. And one thing that's really of a concern, this is a new product that came out about two years ago from China. This is ubiquitous across much of, many of the Willets stores. It's made to look like a whip-it, so basically a huffing party drug, and this is cotton candy flavor. This unit, and I don't know if you can see it with my camera, packs a whopping 400 cigarettes worth of nicotine in one unit. Teens that we work with in the region, Lake County teens, some teens in Sonoma County, are going through one of these every couple of days. And these are ubiquitous across Mendocino County where these flavored products are allowed. So the industry starts talking about, oh, we need this, adults should have access, it's, you know, the retailers are good actors. Unfortunately, the data is contrary to that. So just wanted to mention, and our undercover purchaser was able to buy two of these products at two smoke shops, Flume Float packing 400 cigarettes worth of nicotine. So the teen vaping epidemic, it's not abstract, it's happening in Willets, it's happening to our Mendocino County youth, and hopefully we can do something to stop it.
All right. Karen, do you have anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the organization? I see Joanne.
Yeah, thank you. And Greg, thank you. I'm sorry your camera was off. We weren't able, or I wasn't able to see the product that you were talking about, the Flume Float. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the marketing. So I want to thank Mayor Rodriguez and the council members for letting us come speak tonight. My name is Joanne Cicato, and I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Lake and Mendocino Counties for the NorCalfor Health Project, which is a project of the California Health Collaborative. So what we have learned is that kids who see it, try it. And what I mean by that is that what is around us in our everyday environment influences our choices and decisions, and even worse so for children, is they are far more impressionable than we adults are. Tobacco and vape companies intentionally design packaging and advertising with the same colorful images of candy, sodas, and toys. It's intentional. We know that our local stores place these colorful yet highly addictive products near kid-friendly products, and this can be very misleading and confusing, and not just for kids. I was absolutely shocked the first time I saw these seemingly healthy and innocuous products on display, and then learned that they were either tobacco or some form of nicotine product. I smoked tobacco for 25 years, like 20 years ago, and it is a totally different world now. What we also know is that exposure to marketing more than doubles the odds that kids will use tobacco. So Willets has 15 tobacco retailers. That's a density of 3.1 stores per thousand people, which is almost three times that of unincorporated Mendocino County. 60% of those retailers are within 1,000 feet of a school. So this means that tobacco advertising is in our children's faces regularly. It's in their everyday environment. And let's be real here, our children do not want to become nicotine addicts. This is not what they're signing up for when they purchase or use these flashy products. They're signing up for the flavors, the colors, the packaging, the wow of it. Our children do not aspire to become addicted to dangerous products, but because of successful advertising campaigns by the tobacco companies, they are. In 2020, 82% of California high school students who vaped wanted to quit. 82%. Our children do not want to become addicts. Communities all over California, including Mendocino County, are recognizing our responsibility to create conditions where children are safe from these harmful products, less likely to become addicted to nicotine products. I like to think of it as if we found a toy on our store shelves that turned out to be dangerous for our kids. We wouldn't wait for the state or federal government to turn their slow wheels. We would take it off the shelves ourselves immediately, as soon as we learned it was dangerous. And this is what communities all around the state are doing. They're taking matters into their own hands, like at local city councils and at county board of supervisors, and they're banning these products because these are the most dangerous for our children. And with that, I'd like to, if Tim Henry is in the audience?
Actually, actually, I'm going to hold you there. We were at the introductory portion of the item on the agenda, and I was trying to give you an opportunity to introduce some background information on the ordinance. Once we get past that introductory portion, council has an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions from the introduction, and then with that, we can take public comment, keeping in mind that each individual has three minutes to speak, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. So we've had a lot of information, so let me just ask council real quick. Does anybody have any clarifying questions from the three speakers we've heard from so far? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes, for the purchases that were made, were any of these, I know that you don't regulate, or this ordinance wouldn't regulate the reservation tobacco sales, is that correct? So do you ever, or do these buy STING programs ever go onto the reservations to see how compliant they are? I kind of feel like, it's kind of like spraying for termites, but then your neighbor's termites are coming onto your house afterwards, you know, kind of that analogy. So I kind of want to know how well-rounded you research is.
The statewide numbers, I believe, would only include tribal jurisdictions if tribal jurisdictions were part of that actual operation. In general, I would say that one doesn't need to look at comparisons between tribal jurisdictions versus non-tribal. You just look at edges between unincorporated versus incorporated cities, and you see, you can see variations. But in general, you know, sometimes those, it gets to the point where when you get rid of these products out of the space, then that kind of alleviates that. But the big question is, I have not checked out to see what the inventory is, but I'm not familiar if there are, in particular, like these products, the high dosage vapes even at the casino or any smoke shop nearby. So it really depends on what inventory is on any given tribal jurisdiction.
And Greg, I'm just curious, just to possibly help with this, being that they are sovereign nations, and my guess is that the California state doesn't have jurisdiction over that when they go to do their purchase surveys, is that, would that be accurate?
That's my understanding, yes.
Councilmember, can you talk us to? Sorry, go ahead, Joanne.
I just want to say, so if we were to ban this, and the casinos, or not casinos, but the tribes wanted to go into business and augmenting and selling this, if they don't currently be selling, you wouldn't, or we wouldn't be able to stop that, is that correct?
Well, the state of California has tobacco prevention education funding for tribes, and in various Mendocino tribal communities, there are actually active education programs going on, run by tribal health departments. So there's really, there's-
I'm sorry, but you're not answering my question. I guess what I'm asking is, we could have cessation programs here, but we're not talking about cessation programs or education. I'm asking, would we be able to block this, or as a county, be able to keep it out completely? Or will there still be someplace where it could be sold?
I prefer not to target the local tribal jurisdiction. I'd actually prefer to highlight the fact that Willets is a tobacco oasis surrounded by unincorporated Mendocino, where you don't have flavored products from the border of Humboldt all the way down through Leightonville, Covelo, et cetera, all the way down to Ducaia. And actually, Willets is the tobacco oasis that's providing flavored products that aren't available and unincorporated, so-
Okay, I still think you didn't answer my question. Thank you. All right, that's all I have.
Any other council members have clarifying questions? Okay. I had a couple of questions. You had talked about education, and I was curious, and specifically 2021, what education programs did the coalition support or ensure or partake in specific to Willets? There's a gentleman here from the county public health department, Bobby. I don't know if you can speak to that?
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, and the city council for hearing us. I'm Bobby Ducharme, I'm a Willets resident and also the program administrator for community wellness programs, which is the home of the tobacco prevention program here in the county. 2021 was a very challenging year for tobacco prevention all over the state because of COVID. So all the work that we would be doing in schools, in communities, really did not happen. It was a very, very hard year. So I don't know how I could even explain that, you know, we really wanted to do a lot of stuff, and we actually couldn't.
Okay, so probably nothing happened in 2020 education. Nothing happened even though our kids were in school in 2021. What about in, let's see, 2019? Could you reference 2019?
Can I, Bobby? Bobby, is it possible, this is Mark Viero, is it possible for me to speak on this a little bit?
That'd be great, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting you, but I'd like to just answer the question as thoroughly as possible. So as far as the Mendocino County Office of Education, I work, my name is Mark Viero, I work in and around the county, providing tobacco prevention education for districts, in schools, and in classrooms. So since I started with the Mendocino County Office of Education, which I believe was in 2019, we provided in-class education around vaping. In school year 2021 and 2022, I was actually at Willets High School and did education for the scrubs class there for, I believe it was three different classrooms, and educated them on the harms of vaping, and some of the, actually talked a little bit about the laws just because of the fact that many of the students asked if these devices are so destructive and they're so harmful to our health, then why doesn't, why doesn't anybody do anything about them? And I did explain to him, them, and the county as a whole, we had passed a policy in order to eliminate flavored vaping devices from the county. In addition, in the spring of 2022, I was at Bethel Grove and educated sixth all the way through eighth grade, and that was every classroom. We had vaping education, I believe it was three days of vaping education in those classrooms as well.
Mayor Rodriguez, I can, I can offer something. It wasn't back in 2019, but in 2022, our project, the NorCalfor Health Project, did a youth workshop around the dangers of vaping and around specifically targeting and marketing by the tobacco companies. We held the Born to Breathe Youth Media Festival event, which I believe our coalition chair, Larry, sent you a video, each of the council members a video of the, kind of the mini-documentary of that event. We're in the process, you can see the banner behind me, we're in the process of turning it into a roadshow where hopefully the schools will take these into their forays and be able to, the kids can take the QR codes and see the entries and get some education around it as well. But again, this started just this year, and we will most likely do it next year as well. And just to note, the majority of entrants in the festival were from Mendocino County, so we were really excited about that.
Thank you, that was helpful information. A little bit of a follow-up question. It sounds like there was some education that did happen in Willets, and that's great to hear, in 2021, 2022. You mentioned at the high school that some education took place in scrubs. Unfortunately, not all students take scrubs and had access to that. But I was just curious if you're doing any education with the, with the teachers or the administration, who often are the ones who see these devices in classes, in hallways, in bathrooms? And I'm just wondering if there's been any education with them to ensure that when, for example, a student is breaking a rule and has one of these on campus, that they know the proper procedures to deal with this? Because I have concerns about, you know, if there isn't, if there isn't a good education piece there, and there isn't enforcement, then- piece there, and there isn't enforcement, then it is lacking. I'm just curious if you're working with educators?
This is Mark Viero again. I'll answer the question the best of my ability. So our program is, it works by way of invitation, so there is no, there is no curriculum that is absolute for all of the districts. So each district is not required to take on the educational services that the county office of education provides. So we send out flyers, we do presentations for the superintendents, as well as the staff that work at the county office of education send out notices as well to the principals and the vice principals about the educational services that we have and that are available to them for free, because we use state funding and a state grant in order to provide that education. We do have programs, or excuse me, we do have presentations that are available to students, parent night education, as well as staff. But it is really up to the school districts, and I'm not trying to put it off on them, but it really is up to the school districts to accept the presentations and, you know, find the time in order for us to come in and to do that. So over the last three years, we've seen a huge uptick in the amount of school districts in the county that have asked us to come out. For instance, when I first started, it was a very, very long uphill battle in order for school districts to even admit that there was a problem coming off of COVID. And when students started to come back into class, most school districts called in and requested services from us because there was such a huge rise in vaping that had occurred. So to answer your question short, in short, the answer would be no. In Willets, we have not provided the education for students. However, the teacher that I have been working with is Jennifer Barrett there at Willets High School. She previously was a member of the coalition, and even prior to that, she was a member of the county staff in a role that Bobby now holds as an administrator of the tobacco control program some 10, 15 years ago. So she is very well-educated as far as the dangers and some of what the devices look like, as well as the policies and procedures as far as Willets High School goes. And I know that in speaking with her and working with her, she has spoken to her colleagues there at the high school about the issues that the high school faces. As far as, you know, anything in greater detail than that, of course, since I wasn't privy to it, I wouldn't be able to speak on it. But I do know that she speaks on it constantly because the staff is very aware of the issues that happen in the bathrooms, out by the fields, or, you know, behind the swim pool area over there. So those are some of the areas that I know that when I've talked to her that are kind of like the hotspots in, at the Willets High School.
Thank you. Yes, I am a Willets High School parent. I have, if you probably know, I have a daughter there currently, is a junior, and have a son that graduated, and many other children that graduated, and I'm a sports coach there. So I know that this is an important issue. All right, is there any, any other council members with questions before I move on to public, formal public comment?
I would like to say something. I've been retired for 20 years, so I'm really out of this, but I can tell you that school and all of the other cigarettes and all that was busy when I was there. I mean, 20 years ago, 22 years ago. So it's not just something brand new, and maybe it's classified a little different, but it's the same thing. I, I can't tell you how many kids in my class, I shot, cocked, shot, cut out round circles to put in the back pocket so that they would have the ring in the back pocket when they were around their friends. And it wasn't a can, it was a plywood disc. So that's, I'm just telling you that they've been doing this for years. And so I really don't know what you people have done. They tried to call me a couple of times, and I was busy, but I, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comments. So anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, unfortunately, we're using a new platform.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Hi, this is Greta, I've had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Greta, I can't see you on this new screen, my apologies. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, and I apologize if this is a silly question. I spoke to several teachers in the last couple of weeks asking about this issue, and one of the things that I heard from all of them was that the issue that they're finding at the high school is that the kids are smoking cannabis in these vape pens, not tobacco. And I'm wondering if we change the tobacco ordinance to ban the flavored tobaccos, is that going to diminish access to these devices, that they won't be able to smoke cannabis at school? Because that seems to be what I'm hearing is the real problem. I don't know if anyone can answer that.
Tabrina, this is Mike- Can I speak?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Mike Colvig, I'm the principal of Willets High School, and I think Greta hit it on the head, is banning the device is important, and being specific to just tobacco is limiting the scope of what we're tackling on a daily basis. The devices are drug delivery devices regardless of the drug. And so limiting the access will help. It won't eliminate it, but it will absolutely help what we're seeing on the cannabis. It's not a new thing. We've had cigarette, we've had marijuana. It's just the impact that what they're smoking today is so much more powerful and dangerous that it's, we absolutely need to do something as a community, as well as a school system, to protect the kids from themselves or from their friends. Just yesterday, our second day of school, already having to confiscate THC device. Second day of school. And again, it's used in the bathrooms. So it's an ongoing issue. So I'm in full support of a ban. I would like to see it not just so limited to tobacco, but if tobacco's on the table today, I will absolutely take it. And hopefully we can, you know, if we have to revisit THC, then so be it. But it's the device itself that's really the critical thing.
All right, thank you. Greta, Vice Mayor Connie, did that answer your question?
Yes, I think so. Although we haven't actually, I don't know if the ordinance has been written yet in a way that addresses that. Are we looking at banning the actual devices that can deliver any of these drugs, or are we just looking at banning flavored tobacco?
I believe we're having a conversation about the issue, and that there was an ordinance put before us that addresses one of those issues. Okay.
I apologize, I'm Jay McCuberry with Tobacco Free North Coast. I just wanted to butt in for a second because I can answer that question about regulating cannabis. I don't know about eliminating the vaping devices, you know, many of those, most of them being sold are single-use disposable devices that, like Greg said, could have up to 400 cigarettes worth of nicotine in them. But legally speaking, I believe that cannabis regulations in California and tobacco regulations in California are separate streams and must be done separately, but indeed, there's a lot of lessons from tobacco that can be used with cannabis as well, so.
All right. Thank you. I believe Councilmember Gonzalez, and then Councilmember Strong.
I would like to try it again, too.
And Stransky.
Okay, first of all, number one, I'm not here advocating smoking. Both my parents were smokers growing up, and that kind of, kind of, they did not something I wanted to take up, so I wanted to kind of put that on the table. I guess, a question for Jim Lance, and I guess, because when I looked at the ordinance when it first came out, it dealt with flavored tobacco, yet in all my research with retailers and with school officials, the overall thing seemed to be vaping. I, like Larry said, yeah, flavored tobacco, chewing tobacco was a big thing growing up, but it seems to me vaping at everywhere. I mean, I saw that at Bechtel and the high school, and it seems like vaping seems to be it, and I've heard the same thing that Greta brought up, that it's the folks bringing cannabis there. Obviously, they're not getting that at the liquor store, the whatever. So my question for Jim is twofold. Number one, on the legislation or the thing that's going to be voted on in November, how would that encompass this? And number two, could we, do we have to adopt the county ordinance, or can we have something that just deals with vaping? I mean, I guess it's kind of like, why cut off your leg when you have a bunion? You know, I guess I'm looking at, because it seems like the big problem seems to be vaping. So that's-
Well, with regard to your first question, in 2020, the state passed SB 793, which is a rather brief law regarding flavored tobacco products. It was aimed at using candy and fruit and other flavored tobaccos to entice young people to use nicotine. And that passed, but was immediately challenged, and now in November, the referendum on that proposition 31 will be heard. A no vote on that means to repeal SB 793, and a vote of yes is to uphold that state law 793, thus banning the sale of flavored tobacco. It's interesting to look at the state law 793 compared with the proposed ordinance that we're talking about. They're quite different. The proposed ordinance is a TRL, a tobacco retail licensing ordinance, that requires anyone who's going to, if you want to sell tobacco within city limits, you've got to be licensed, and you're going to be regulated. And there are serious implications and consequences if you violate, leading to, ultimately to suspension or revocation of a license. And very steep fines, too. In comparison, the state law 793, which may be upheld in November, has as a consequence a $250 fine for every instance of a violation of that state law of sales to minors or sales of outlawed products. It's a $250 fine, and there is no license, so there is no suspension or revocation. And so it's a much lighter consequence than if we were to adopt the proposed retail license ordinance that could result in like a one-year suspension or longer. And so that, in a nutshell, is the difference between the two. So your question was, so what happens in November? In November, the voters may in fact uphold proposition 31, and then SB 793 becomes the law finally. And it would outlaw flavored tobaccos, but the consequences would not nearly be as steep as these proposed draft ordinances.
And could we enact just the vaping aspect of our, that was the other question?
Yeah, you could, we could, and I think, are you considering a modification of our existing ordinance 8.24, or are you talking about some kind of a modification of the new draft 8.26 that we've been working on this year?
Well, I have had constituents, adults, reach out that use smokeless tobacco, and they feel penalized, but even though they, I think, when I talk to retailers, a lot of the retailers are kind of expecting the measure to pass, and so some of them are kind of gearing up for that to go away. But I guess I'm just kind of looking for all, again, trying to be fair to everybody at the same time, deal with the issue that I seem to, I guess the issue that when I've talked to educators seems to be, again, the vaping.
Yeah, I think that if you are interested in having new, a new ordinance that addresses vaping and flavored tobacco products, that now would be the opportunity to introduce a new ordinance, it's a modernized ordinance, and not deal with something that has been so old on our books. In 2007, the city passed a tobacco retail license ordinance, and it, like the present one we're considering, has different periods of suspension if you get caught. If you are found to have violated, I think it's first a 14-day suspension, and then a 30-day suspension, and then a, I forget, six months. Ultimately, I think on the fourth and the fifth time, it's revocation for three years. So what we have on the books is a pretty significant penalty, but what it doesn't have is the monetary penalties that the current one has. And so I'm not sure what the council's concern is or desire is, but the basic difference between what we have on the books and have had since 2007 versus what we have crafted this year is that the newer ordinance has very steep monetary penalties, it has a different hearing and appeal process. The old one from 2007 has a grievance committee as the appellate body. So someone who is found to have violated this and is facing suspension, he'll, he or she will have their grievance heard by a council member working with a city staff member who receives evidence and writes up a report. And I think that the current new one that we're proposing has a more modernized and more efficient hearing procedure, which the city manager acts as the hearing officer, or he assigns that to someone, perhaps a retired judge or an attorney who would come in and be that hearing officer in the case.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connie?
Thank you. I'm curious, if, should this new ordinance pass, would enforcement fall to Davey? And I guess, sub-question for City Manager Bender, does Davey have enough man-hours to actually enforce this? And would we need to consider hiring another person in code enforcement in order to really effectively enforce this ordinance?
Like Mayor Connie, I believe that the ordinance being proposed would be enforced through county staff and county activities. It would not be pressing solely on city staff. There would be some coordination with city staff with county, but the county would be the lead agency.
So even though during the pandemic, we saw that the county health board or order was not being enforced within city limits by county personnel, it was left to city staff to enforce the county-wide ordinance. You're saying that a tobacco ordinance within city limits would be enforced by county personnel?
That's my understanding of the way it's written right now, the draft version.
I feel like the county usually leaves us to our own and kind of says, you deal with it. And I would be, I'm just surprised to hear that they would actually tackle that within city limits. It'd be nice if they did.
Yeah, it'd be nice to hear from the county, from these visitors tonight on what they anticipate. In the past, what has happened is we have this sting operation, a citation is issued, a report is prepared, a written report is prepared, and it is sent to the city to do the actual hearing and enforcement of it. And so that's what I understood that the proposed new ordinance would do as well, but maybe some of our guests have a different understanding about that.
This is Bobby Ducharme from Mendocino County.
Actually, if I could hold off one second. We have council members asking clarifying questions, and then, and then we'll go back to public comments. But when we go to public comments, generally, everybody has an opportunity to speak if you haven't done so, and then council will have the final say. Otherwise, this could go on for hours and hours. So we just, although it's a very important issue, we want to make sure we follow a little bit of process. Vice Mayor Connie, did you feel like you got all the information you needed?
Not necessarily, but I'll, I'll, I can move on.
Okay. Um, uh, Councilmember Stransky was waiting?
Um, are we the last city that you have visited and voted against this or for it? Are we the last one? Are we the first one? Where are we in the group of four cities in Mendocino County?
There was Stransky. Currently, the, uh, the, the three other municipalities are, I can't speak on where the coalition has been working with them, but the three other municipalities are, um, basically set this aside. They are waiting to see what happens with the statewide action in November, um, and some further discussions with the coalition. So, uh, I believe we're the furthest along in the process, other than the counties who have adopted the ordinance. And that's the one that we took as a model, made some slight changes according to some changes that they made. Um, and that was what was presented to the council back in March.
And where, where the, nobody has, as a city, has voted for you so far?
No other municipality within Mendocino County has adopted the ordinance, which is being promoted through the actions of the coalition.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strong, I see your hands still raised on the screen. Did you want to ask any clarifying questions before I go?
Yeah, I'm, um, I feel like there are a lot of unanswered questions that we're struggling with. And one of them is the enforcement one that Greta just asked. Um, I would like to have that clarified. Um, this ordinance, the proposed ordinance would ban the sale of these devices and products both. Um, you know, and so I'm wondering, would it, if we enacted, would it cut back on how many, how easily it is accessed for our youth to get the vaping devices as well as the vaping products that are being sold? Um, and I guess my, my thought about that is anything we can do to make a bigger dent in the availability of these products that are really being targeted to use, um, seems like a step in the right direction, you know, even if it doesn't cover everything you'd like. And I, and I also like the fact that the enforcement mechanism is more straightforward and has more teeth in it, in what we're being asked, uh, here on this ordinance than what the state, uh, measure that's on the state ballot. So, um, you know, I, there are unanswered questions, but I, I feel like moving forward and taking steps in the right direction is a good thing. Um, I, I guess I do want a little clarification on the devices as opposed to the products. Is, is it all one thing? I don't even know.
I'm not sure I understand your question match. And I mean, people can buy the device and then you can buy the product that goes in the device. Uh, so once you have the device, you can add watermelon flavor, whatever flavor you want. You can put tobacco in it or you can put, uh, cannabis, marijuana, whatever you want to call it in it. So they're versatile, most of them.
And, and these devices?
This is Jay. If, if it's on me, um, just a little bit of clarification. Um, you know, these, these devices are everywhere now. Uh, it's a new technology.
Excuse me?
Anything.
Excuse me, sir. I think that the, the question that Councilmember Strong was asking was about the device versus the product that goes into it. I want to be mindful that we're not, uh, adding, uh, information beyond the question so that everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Okay. So very briefly then, you know, you can, the devices themselves can be manufactured, developed in your garage to vape anything. Um, it's a chemical, you know, a liquid that is atomized into very tiny particles of liquid that are then inhaled into the lungs. Um, but what we're talking about tonight is just the tobacco products that are being promoted, um, by, um, you know, big tobacco companies. Yeah, it's, it's a big, it's a bigger issue though.
So the devices are not being, um, proposed to be outlawed or regulated in this ordinance? It's the products that go in them that are, um, that are being regulated?
Just tobacco products, correct.
Yeah. And, um, nicotine products as well. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So, um, during the, the recent discussion, I pulled, uh, I pulled up the file of the proposed ordinance and I want to stand for, uh, to correct some of the comments. Basically, it reads that enforcement would be just, maybe the responsibility of the city. Uh, and as, uh, Mr. Lance alluded to, there is a hearing process which would be initiated through the city, which names the city manager as a hearing officer or a delegation or delegated authority or individual to assume that role. Um, there is coordination on, um, enforcement with the county where they would be responsible for undercover or essentially sting operations to implement provisions of this proposed ordinance. But as Vice Mayor Connie has alluded to, the responsibility would fall directly on staff. If, um, a member of the public lodges a complaint form, we would have to respond to that and do the investigation. But, you know, it's hard to, this is not like a code enforcement or a building violation or property maintenance. You know, you would actually, you would have to have evidence or that documentation that that transaction took place in person. So that goes back to that county involvement with establishing and scheduling, um, undercover buys or having a minor proceed with a purchase transaction. So, um, yes, it would be resting on city responsibility. Yes, it would be, uh, a workload or a task that we would have to assume and program into code enforcement or potentially the police department.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, before I give an opportunity for anybody who's not had the opportunity to speak, and if you'd like to speak, please click on the, uh, the little hand so that I know that you're waiting. Um, I, I just want to say that when I first heard about this, uh, ordinance, I, I was all on board. My first thought was, I've got kids. I want to protect, I want to protect kids. Uh, I thought, well, this has got to be the right thing to do. But then, the dilemma I found myself in is in talking to my constituents, the people who elected me to this position, that, uh, more than the majority, didn't share my views. Um, and so that challenged me to, to try to understand their perspective. And I think one very valid perspective that they have is that we want to protect children, but this ordinance essentially is taking away adults' rights to choose what, what they would like to do. And that's, that's really the essence of my difficulty in this, is that you want to remove this for everyone, not, not just for children. Um, and it is the, it is the thought that, that some people have, that they have concerns about regulation. I mean, there's a, I, we have, I'm sure there's times when we all feel that we're over-regulated in some part of our life. And I think that it's a fair argument for some people to say that should the city council, you know, regulate this to the level where adults aren't able to make those decisions for themselves. We all know, for example, that sugar's harmful and it leads to obesity, but we're not removing sugar from every, every food on the shelf within our community. So we're always having to do this balancing act of like, what is, what is very harmful? And, you know, we have to sometimes step in, um, and do what we think is best. But this situation, listening to my constituents, I find when there's a valid point that, uh, that we really need to address it. And so for that reason, I'm kind of stuck on this issue. Um, is there anybody from the public? I see, I see Mark's hand up, but I do know that you had an opportunity to, to speak. And I also see, um, um, Chavez. It's cutting off part of the screen. I do apologize. Azucena Chavez? Yes, thank you very much. I see your last name now. Okay. The floor is yours for three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, well, my name is Azucena Chavez Huerta. I'm with Blue Zones Project. I'm the organization, the, excuse me, the, um, anyway, um, the reason I'm, I'm here today is when the TRL and the flavor ban passed in the unincorporated Mendocino County area, I worked for Tobacco Control Program in Mendocino County Health and Human Services. And so today I want to share that experience with you guys and what that was like. The tobacco control, uh, in the tobacco control program, uh, one of the things that I did is I organized and implemented a tobacco, a youth tobacco buy survey for the unincorporated areas in Mendocino County. And it is very important to note that while some of the retailers were really good about asking for IDs, not all of them did. And some of our youth were able to buy tobacco, uh, products. Um, it is, it was also my job to visit each retailer in the unincorporated area to inform them of the new, uh, tobacco retail and flavor ban, um, that took place. When I spoke to them, I only, I only spoke to one individual or one shop owner who was supposed to be, um, to this TRL. He claimed he would go out of business if he could not sell the, uh, flavored tobacco products. However, he is still in business today. Um, one of the conversations that really stood out to me when I was doing these visits to the retailers was of, um, a shop owner who said that he would never use these products or allow his children to use them. He knew how dangerous they were for their health. He also shared with me that he, he liked to work out a lot and he wanted to be healthy until the last, you know, his dying days. He also said that he'd never put anything like this into his body, yet he sold the product. Another story that I do remember was of a woman in the Fort Bragg area. Um, she shared that her addiction to smoking was so bad that one day she found herself standing outside her home in the middle of the worst storm she'd ever been in. She was wearing a shower cap and a pink bathrobe over her clothes to protect her new baby from secondhand smoke. She said that she started smoking in her early teen years and had no idea of the impact it would have in her future health or how difficult it would be for her to quit, which when I spoke to her, she had to quit. As of now, I do not know of any retailer who went out of business because of the passing of the TRL and flavor ban. What I do know is that most of the people that I did speak to regret smoking and would never allow their loved ones to smoke early. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Huerta, next?
Thank you. Um, hello, council. My name is Michelle Huerta. I represent the Blue Zones Project of Mendocino County, a community-led well-being initiative serving Mendocino County and the cities and towns they're in. I have lived in Mendocino County for my entire life and I have lived in Willets for about two years now. And I'd like for my hometown of Willets to have an updated Tobacco Retail License Ordinance that reflects the values of health, home, and family, which are so integral to the culture of Willets. At the start of Blue Zones Project Mendocino County, um, we conducted a study of needs and opportunities for advancement of public health through policy. And both local community stakeholders and national experts agree that a tobacco retail license modeled after the adopted, uh, by the Mendocino, uh, County was critical to protecting and serving the vulnerable population of Willets and that the community was ready for such a policy. Since then, our local team has been leading grassroots outreach and have heard strong community writing this for a ban on vaporizers and brick and mortar stores and fortification of retailer enforcement. Calls from the community to protect our, our youth, stop big tobacco and end this epidemic ring through Tammy. One Willet sophomore recently wrote to us, "I am a teen and I'm addicted to flavored nicotine products. So fix that." In a recent conversation with a class of 2022 high school graduate, she reaffirmed how easy it is for youth to illegally obtain vaporizers and reflected on the ramifications of nicotine addiction epidemic in schools. She shared that many of her peers are incapable of sitting through a single class period without excusing themselves for a fix, which is disruptive, of course, to the addictive child's education, but is also distracting to non-addictive students. She expressed disgust for the experience of using on-campus restaurants, which involves wading through a haze of vapor. She seemed almost surprised at the level of awareness we had of this epidemic. As she reflected on how easy it is for youth to hide their vaporizer use, parents have shared concerns for bringing up their kids in a community that is in the palm of big tobacco's hands, recognizing that Willets has twice as many tobacco retailers per capita than the average for Mendocino County. And nearly four times the state average in that retailer regulations in Willets are, are over two decades old. Current and recovered nicotine addicts pray that new addictions are prevented so that no one else has to suffer what they have. This community is ready to follow suit with the unincorporated Mendocino County and make the changes to end the nicotine addiction epidemic. So I just want to say thank you for your time, uh, council members, and for considering an updated Tobacco Retail License Ordinance. We look forward to celebrating the legacy you will leave with this policy's passage and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public? I don't see any hands. I believe everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Have I missed anyone? Okay. I'll bring it, uh, at this time, I'm going to close the public comment.
Madam Mayor, it's like Jay has got his hand up.
Oh, thank you. Um, um, I, the reason I didn't call on him is I
Yeah.
Do opportunities. Just, just speak. I'll give you one, one minute for follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I just wanted to mention, I know people are concerned about their businesses and how they're going to fare without selling flavored tobacco. Uh, but indeed, according to the California Department of Public Health, uh, there are four million adult smokers in California, but only 5% are using vaping. Um, the convenience store industry touts flavored tobacco as a bright spot in the overall market of declining tobacco sales. That's because more kids are becoming addicted to these dangerous candy-flavored products. And 64 jurisdictions have already banned the sale of flavored products, including Los Angeles, San Francisco, Almond County, every jurisdiction in Marin County and rural areas such as Mono County, Oroville, and closer to home Petaluma and Mendocino County. We don't need to worry about placing profits over the health of our youth. Multiple studies have shown that the adoption of these policies don't hurt the overall retail economy.
Mr. McCovry, your minute is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm going to bring it back to council for, uh, pleasant comments. Uh, we've had an opportunity to discuss this amongst ourselves and had an opportunity to hear from, from the public. Um,
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, this is Mark Fierro. Um, I'd like to just, uh, just add real quick. I was answering a question, so I actually didn't get a chance to actually speak. Um, there was a question that was brought forth by one of the, um, the council members and I just merely answered that question. So I actually didn't get a moment to actually speak about what I had come to talk about.
Okay. I, I'll indulge you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So as an educator in the schools, the one thing that I am seeing is that I'm seeing, uh, when I first started, um, I started seeing 11th and 12th graders that were, um, utilizing these products. Um, generally speaking, most of them said that, um, they were getting them either themselves or from older cousins, um, older brothers and sisters, um, purchasing these products for them. So legal adults buying it for them, which is not uncommon when we think about, um, the the way that youth get access to alcoholic beverages. However, in the past two years, what I've noticed is that the, um, the age of the people that are actually vaping has decreased. So where I used to get calls from schools and saying that it was the seniors and the juniors that were having issues, now I'm getting calls that it's the middle school, it's the seventh and eighth graders. Last year, when I visited Leightonville, they actually caught a third grader, as well as in Fort Bragg, they caught a third grader in both those districts with vaping products. And while Fort Bragg may not be necessarily the concern to the city of Willets, certainly Leightonville is, being that it is, you know, your northernly neighbor. And at that time, flavored vaping products were banned in the Leightonville area. Thus, the, um, the area of opportunity existed in the city of Willets. I'd also like to just close quickly by saying that when I do speak with individuals, in, in this particular case, a student came to me and talked to me after a presentation. He was only in the 10th grade, and he said that he had tried quitting over eight times in the course of one year, and he could not bring himself to stop vaping these products. In another instance, I had a individual that came to me and talked to me about trying to quit over three times over the summer while she was away from school, because she felt like, you know, not being around some of the students and some of the activities that occurred in school, she'd be able to quit it. However, as she started up school in the fall, she came right back to vaping all over again. The one thing that I would like to say in closing is that while we are concerned with the constituents and we are concerned with their rights and what they have to say, who is, who is available for us to hear the voices of those youth? All those kids that are being addicted to these things, we're not listening to their voices because they're not actual constituents of ours, but they are constituents of ours in the future. And lastly, do you know anybody, anybody on the council or anybody that's present today that started smoking when they were before the age of 18 that say today, "Boy, I sure am glad that I started smoking when I was 14, 15, or 16"? I would probably think that it's not the case. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll bring you back to the, the council. I think all of us are willing to acknowledge that there's clearly a problem with teen use. It really comes down to the solution to the problem is maybe where we differ in, in how this problem is resolved. You've presented an ordinance for us to consider as one solution to the problem. It has some merits, although I would argue that there are some concerns in it as well. Personally, I think that the solution is more education, should be more education-based and should be more teen youth enforcement targeted, and more focused on what's happening really within, what's happening with, with teenagers today. And I would have to argue that the constituents who've come forward to present their argument that their rights shouldn't be limited because there's an argument that it could, that it could be detrimental to children if children get these in their hands or, or purchase these products. And so for that reason, I would, I would have to say that I'm not comfortable moving forward with any ordinance, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't be happy to hear from the coalition that you're working on more education at schools, because like I said, I have teenagers myself. I would love to see the Mendocino County Public Health do some sting operations. I don't want to wait five years. Why aren't we doing them quarterly? Why are we doing them biannually? There could be more to be done if we really want to step up and stop retailers from being bad actors. So those are my thoughts. Any other council members with thoughts they'd like to share?
Greta.
Greta, yeah. Vice Mayor Connie?
Thank you. Um, I also have some concerns about this ordinance. However, I feel like all the, um, Councilmember Stransky says kids have been smoking forever, it's the same as it ever was. I think we know that what is being sold to kids today is not what was being sold to them 20 years ago. And I think that we would be negligent to not try something. And even if this isn't the perfect ordinance, I don't think this is something we can kick down the road. It's a serious problem, and it's affecting kids' health in our community on our watch. I would support moving this ordinance forward.
Any other council members have closing thoughts?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to.
Raj?
Yeah, um, I basically agree with what Greta just said. It is, it's such a life, really threatening situation for youth to get hooked on these products that are delivering, you know, really obscene amount of nicotine and addictive substances and being targeted to do that. So I agree that I think it's really important that we do something to try to curb this epidemic. And this ordinance seems like an important step forward. It's probably not ideal. It's not the whole story, and certainly want to have the education aspect continue as well. I would be in favor of hearing and potentially adopting the actual ordinance, and thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of feel like Greta and Mad, but at the same time, I feel that we still have questions. So I would be willing to work with another council member and ad hoc to try and answer the questions. I guess I would hate to have another meeting where we have a lot of testimony, and then in the end it comes down to, you know, maybe a close vote, and I'd, I'd rather everybody get on the same page and have all the questions answered. So I'd be willing to work with another council member and staff on answering the questions before we take it back. Just throwing that out.
Councilmember Stransky, do you have any final thoughts?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, I believe he said he does not. Okay, so, um...
Let me take the mic.
Greta? Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say I would be willing to sit on an ad hoc with Jerry to look further into this. I also wanted to point out, to answer a question he brought up earlier, that the Sherwood Valley Band of Homo Indians does have an active tobacco prevention program. They've been very active on their Facebook page this year and have recently promoted an event they held in late July and another one that will be hopefully happening in September. They're working on developing a non-smoking policy for all of their communal recreational areas, and it seems to me they might be a good partner for the city council to work on something that would include our entire Little Lake Valley. If your concern is, you know, dinging Willets businesses while, you know, the same product might be sold on tribal property, maybe we can work with them for a comprehensive. Okay, I see you nodding, so.
All right, I, I would, would agree that Vice Mayor Connie and Councilmember Gonzalez, I would definitely support them as a committee to look further into the matter. Are there any objections from Councilmember Strong or Stransky?
I do not have one.
I'm seeing no?
No. I don't have any, any problem.
Okay. Um, when, um, Council, or Vice Mayor Connie, you made the proposal, so could you give those here this evening kind of a timeline of what you, would you propose that you would meet in the next 30 days, 60 days, before the end of the year? What are kind of your thoughts on that? Just to give them a...
Well, I believe Jerry first made the proposal to start the ad hoc, but
Yes, he did.
I could meet within the next 30 days if it's agreeable to him.
Yeah, I've got some meetings planned, but I think if we could work our schedule out with staff, even if Jim was available by phone or something if he had questions.
That sounds good. And my apologies, Jerry. You did make that suggestion. It is, it's getting late into the evening. I thank you all for being here today to, to address us on this matter. Clearly, your council is concerned about this. We're just all trying to figure out what the solution to the problem is that takes into account everything that we're hearing from those who have elected us and entrusted us to sit in the seats that we're in. So with that, I'm going to close the public matter B discussion regarding the licensing tobacco issue. And we're gonna move on to item number four, enactment ordinances, which we have none. Item number five, consent calendar, before us, we have the city council minutes from February 23rd and August 10th. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
I shall move on the
Madam Mayor, you have other items on the backside of that agenda.
Yeah, I do. I was just about to say, I flipped over the page. My apologies. We have the resolution ratified and extending for an additional 30 days, our meetings pursuant to AP 361, and then lastly, a discussion and consideration whether to adopt a resolution appointing the only nominees for city councils to the vacancies and canceling the general election on November 8th, 2022. I would entertain a motion, or if you'd like to pull any of those items, let me know now.
I can't, can I vote on this?
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to accept it.
Okay. A quick clarifying question to City Attorney Lamb. Since Stransky is in item number C, should he make a motion for items A through B and then do C separately? I can't hear you.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, that he, he moved the items that don't affect him personally and not move the subject up either.
Is that acceptable to you, Councilmember Stransky?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right, I, I see Councilmember Gonzalez said yes, he's seconding the motion, although I see Mad has a little hand up on the screen. Okay, all right. Um, any public from the, any comments from the public? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
My, my hand was up. I wanted to make a comment. One of, and by the way, this, this format is not very good at all. I, I can't tell whether you can see my hand raised, because there have been times when I've been up, had my hand raised for five minutes and you didn't see me. But anyway, and I can't see everybody else, so just feedback about the format is, is a little frustrating. I just wanted to mention, I did give, Dolores had a couple of sort of basically typographic changes on the, on the minutes. I don't, there's no substantive change involved, so I don't think that requires us to read any changes. And then I'm assuming then both Larry and Greta would have to recuse themselves from item C.
Yeah.
We're only voting on items A and B.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie? Councilmember Connie? Mayor Rodriguez? Yes. I see Vice Mayor Connie's still there. Greta, can you hear us? She's not on my screen, unfortunately. Okay. Um, with that said, two, two. Jim Lance, what do we do?
Oh, it's two to two?
All right, no, it's not two to two. It's, uh, we only have two voting council members. Or three, I apologize. We have three, and Greta is probably abstaining, I'm assuming, because she's not, she's not answering, and I don't know what's going on.
No, 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 no. So the motion basically removes C, so everyone could vote. So you have, if you get that voted before until Greta appears.
Okay, my apologies. I'm multitasking. Greta is messaging me that the meeting dropped out for her, and she's trying to get back online. So I apologize for the confusion. Okay. So we just won't count her vote because she's not
Are we ready for item C? Because I, I want to move approval of item C.
We haven't voted on this one.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I apologize. I'm giving Greta an opportunity. She's messaging me, telling me that her meeting dropped out. She's not sure what's happened. She got disconnected, and she would very much like to participate. So if we could just give her a quick second.
Well, during this interview, I do want to mention the effort that City Clerk Dolores Edison made to get jeans up and running. It's a new platform. It works with our outlook environment. It's, it's, it's the preferred way to do it than the go, the go-to using our new platform, so we'll get used to it.
We will get used to it. Maybe a little bit of tips for us on how to use it because
No, I mean, now we're fully in the Sebo empire of Microsoft, so we're fully licensed.
Okay. So just wanting to know probably, most importantly, how we get everyone's face on the screen. Greta, are you back with us yet?
I can't have that. I don't know why people don't.
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're back. Wonderful.
I'm having a heck of a time. I, so I called in. I can't, I don't know what's happening.
Okay, okay. So Dolores will state where we're at in, in the vote. We had, we had a first and a second on the, on the consent calendar on items A and B. We pulled C to separate it, and she's taken a vote, and so far? We have four yeses and one absent because you weren't here, Greta.
Okay, I'm here and my vote is yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I would like to move, uh, item C for, for, I'd like to move for item C. And I, I would second Mad.
All right, we have a motion and a second on item C, which is discussion and consideration whether to adopt a resolution appointing the only nominees for city council to the vacancies and canceling the general election on November 8th, 2022. Any further comments?
Just that we're not canceling the whole election, just the cities being on there.
Good point. Okay, anybody from the public want to address us on this matter? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mayor Rodriguez? Yes, and we're pleased to have both of you officially back on the council after November 8th. Thank you for signing up for four more years. All right, monthly activity reports, we have nothing before us, commissions, agencies, and authorities, no business today, city manager reports and recommendations. We have item A, adoption of a resolution approving a pass-through rate adjustment for solid waste of Willets Inc. in response to increased fees from Concrete Compost for the processing of mixed organic waste collected from residential and commercial accounts within the city of Willets. City Manager Bender?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will tee this off. I believe Mr. Ward is on, on the meeting, so he can jump in and specify some of the details that were identified and listed in the packet materials in the agenda summary. Uh, this is the kind of a scenario where it's, uh, it falls downhill or it's a chain event. Basically, Cold Creek Compost is raising their processing fee, tipping fee, um, to providers of material, in this case, to solid waste of Willets. And they are basically a franchise holder for providing base management services for the residents and businesses within the city. And for them to make their business model work, they're gonna have And for them to make their business model work, they're going to have to raise their rates in response to what they are experiencing from Coal Creek Compost. And so that is all alluded to in the agenda summary, the breakdown. It is in the terms of the franchise agreement that place management, excuse me, Solid Waste of Willets has with the city. At the end of all this, and if the council so chooses to take positive action on it, we will see a minor increase in franchise fees associated with the post-increase. So that's what I have. Basically, this is not anything initiated through city actions or city performance or any task that are assigned to city staff or city work schedules. This is basically a response to what is happening with Coal Creek Compost and how they need to structure their business model based on inflation and current economic practices.
Can everybody hear me? This is Jerry Ward.
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Jerry Ward, Solid Waste of Willets. It's unfortunate that I have to bring this before you because we had a contract that only allowed a cost of living increase for the next several years. And unfortunately, because they're the only location we can take the greenways rather than drive to Vacaville, California, we were unfortunate to have to agree to the terms. And I had to, I had to push it on because of the additional costs. It was significant in the sense that it went from $36 a ton to 60. He actually wanted $66 a ton, but after some complaining, I got him down to 60 because there is another site coming online down in Ukiah called CNS Waste Solutions, but they're not quite online and their tipping fee is going to be 65. So in order to keep the status quo with Coal Creek, I talked him down to 60 and I also requested that there not be a COLA increase January 2023. The next COLA increase would be until '24. So again, I apologize, I had to do this. It is significant and unfortunately for our customers, it's just mean for the main, the main customer being a 35 gallon cart, it's about 29 cents more a month. So anyway, I'm here to answer any questions and I want to thank you for considering this, even though I love to be in a position where I can make up a bunch of stuff that I need another, you know, $400 a can or something like that while he's done, because he's got me under the barrel. And it's unfortunate, but we have no choice at this time.
All right. Council questions for Mr. Ward?
Jerry, I know this is not relevant to this, but do you see yourself, when the leaves start to fall, continuing with your program of doing the double pickups during that period of time when leaves fall?
Yes. That was a real successful program and we will, we will do it again this year. We went to weekly service rather than every other week, whether at one card or more than one card. So no, it'll be, it was successful and we'll continue to do it again this year.
All right. Thank you.
Strong, were you waiting to speak?
No, I don't have any problem with this. I'm glad it's only 29 cents raised for the average customer and I, I understand how Coal Creek Compost is in a bind that is good time urgent in their business, you know, to, to keep them afloat, to wait until January, which would be the normal time to consider these kinds of additions. And I'm glad Jerry has talked him down to not have another increase in January. So that, that sounds like a good compromise. And they aren't providing a service that isn't really available, otherwise, at least not yet. If you want a motion, I will move the approval.
I don't see any other councilmembers wishing to speak. Stransky, are you wanting to speak?
Yes, I, I will second it.
Okay. Okay. So Match, that was in fact a motion and yes, and Stransky seconded your motion. I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public who want to address us? All right. Having heard none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any closing comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Connie just texted. Oh, you're back again. Wonderful.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you, council and staff. I appreciate it. We'll, we'll keep, keep doing our services and try to keep the rates low. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to City Manager Bender's verbal reports.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring this formally to the attention of the council. I know you're aware of it. A little over a year ago, the school district was embarked on a site improvements project that was adjacent to the swimming pool. During the course of construction activities, they uncovered underground storage tanks that had some free product, petroleum-related products within them. They pursued remediation of those tanks, which required the extraction and remove all the liquids in the tanks. And everything was good. There was no leakage, no deepage, nothing actually entered in the ground or groundwater. So thank goodness on that foot. During the course of that action, the school district formally and now formally made a request for making half of the remediation cost of the project. The project was a little less than $100,000 and our 50% share based off the agreement that the city council has with the school district in utilizing the pool as a shared resource and our obligation on capital improvement projects. So, you know, we were working with the school district, trying to figure out what happened at the timeframe back. We pinpointed it to be early to mid-'80s, why, or what, what initiated the decommissioning of the heating units, or heating unit at the pool that was fed by the petroleum that was held in those tanks. And in subsequent correspondence with school district officials, there was no information. We, we combed through our files. There was nothing at City Hall here that indicated that, you know, we were aware of it, the school district's aware of it. So, you know, the existing time have extended and, you know, I think it's the right thing to do. We, we programmed this allocation into the budget and actually we budgeted $100,000 thinking at the time when we were putting together a budget, we thought the overall project was $200,000, but it was only 100, so 50% of that would be about a little less than $50,000. So if there's any concerns from the council, speak now. I know the council, the school has initiated another formal request through the recently appointed school superintendent, Mark Bebe. We've worked with him, have some good dialogue with him. But he put the request forward. He did a, did a search on any of his records and he asked some of the staff who had some history back then or knew what maybe transpired. Nothing came forward. So I think, you know, honoring our agreements, we're going to move forward and submit the reimbursement request that the school district submitted.
I would support this just because the school district's been a good partner when we've had disasters and opening up their facilities and we do share that resource and it is a valuable resource. That pool has served the greater Willets community and I think a lot of our community learns to swim there. So that's all I'm going to say.
And, you know, we want to be good neighbors and honor our agreement. We just wanted to, you know, we were looking for the evidence to support this that we can present to the council and say, yes, you know, there was decisions made by the mayor, city staff back there that tied us formally to what happened with the decommissioning of the heating unit, but we couldn't find that. So it was there, they took care of it, rightly so, they did a great job. We had city staff over there inspecting, looking out for our interests as well. It is what it is. I think we just have, we have the money set aside. I think we need to submit the reimbursement.
Stransky?
I would like to second that and I, I think it's well worth the money. Amount of, number of kids that have learned to swim there is worth the $50,000 that the committee is going to spend, in my estimation.
Strong?
Are you actually asking us to make a motion and, and a vote or is this just basically for our information? Because I.
Well, we can do it. We can, we can do two things. I mean, it's already a budget. We also, we announced it at the time of budget prep and budget presentation. So you already approved the allocation. If you want to go on record and make a motion to authorize that reimbursement, I would gladly appreciate that, to kind of formalize the simple process.
Is it agendized as such?
It's agendized as a verbal report and so Jim, do you have?
By the way, I have no objection at all, so I don't think if it doesn't require us to vote and it's already in our budget.
If you want to vote for, and that's the thing, it's in the budget. So if, you know, it sounds like consensus, well, at least majority of the council that spoke tonight, that it's in good, good standing to proceed.
Yeah, that's fine. If it wasn't specifically agendized as an action item, but only a verbal report and the, I think your best noted the result is the council, the consensus of the council was to issue the reimbursement.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Low proceed. Last, before I sign off, Finance Director is present. He just wants to give a quick update, kind of isolated from the other reports. We're still trying to work him into the rotation, but a couple of items of interest that a council has raised over the last several weeks, or at least as we transitioned out of the budgeting process.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm bringing you a quick update on the Finance Department and a request as for the, as for the update. Oh, ask for the update, okay. So the Finance Department has completed the fiscal year 1920 audit and basic financial statements. And we are now gearing up for a state controllers audit as well as the fiscal year 2020, 2021 and 2021, 2022 audit financials. Additionally, we will be convening the Finance Committee on August 31st, I believe that is a Wednesday, and we will be introducing updates on our progress towards revamping policies and procedures of the department, along with a more in-depth dive on where we are at fiscally and where we plan on being by the end of the fiscal year. Just a quick list, I will be trying to implement or revise a purchasing policy, industry policy, cash handling policy, and develop new financial crisis policy and reserve policy. Additionally, we will be working to rehouse our payroll system within our current financial system, or ACS as it is now, and prior to us working to migrate over to a new ERP system that we can, that allow us to provide more better, more robust information. So finally, I would like to take the first steps to develop the parameters regarding the composition of Measure K Committee. In addition, staff, we are asking for clarity on what reporting requirements you may be wanting, along with any suggestions regarding the scope of the committee's responsibilities. I have some ideas on what we can do, but I wanted to offer council an opportunity to provide us some direction on where our focus should be. Our hope is that we can set up this committee sometime around mid to end of September. And in order for us to successfully convene the committee, we will need an appointment of two members from the community. So with that, that's just for direction on what council wants from Measure K, from the Measure K Committee, and if there are any priorities the council wants us to focus on. And additionally, if there are any members in the community you have in mind to appoint to this committee and, and if you do, we are willing to receive our offer and invitation for them to join us. I'm not sure if we would require a motion or how this would work, or should we provide that opportunity at a later date when we bring this item to council as a resolution as prescribed by Measure K ordinance? So with that, I'm, I'm requesting information or direction.
I believe that this isn't a mayor's appointment of a committee. This is rather something that is part of the presentation that you're going to give us later. So it seems to me that it would be appropriate, it would come back later.
Okay.
Do you have any input, City Manager?
Yeah, so basically what we were trying to do here is just plan to see that, you know, the council members have been asking for the formation of the Measure K Committee. It's important, it was tied to the initiative. And we're getting our house in order where we have the documents. So we'll look at putting a notice in the paper and asking for, you know, soliciting for interested members and, and identify, you know, what are the interested individuals who want to serve? And we'll meet with them and we'll present those candidates to the council and you would so choose.
Thank you. That was helpful. Councilmember Strong?
Would you like us, councilmembers, to submit any names of people who might potentially be interested to City Manager or to Manny or what? You know, I don't know if they'd be willing, but just, you know, have some people who might have skills in that, in that area that could suggest.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think, you know, typically when you're trying to appoint members to a committee, we would do this solicitation, turn a notice out and gather a pool of candidates. And if you have someone that is aware, you're aware of and would be interested, then yes, we would be gladly looking to it, into them.
Jim, did you have something you wanted to add?
And no, just in the past, when we've had vacancies on commissions, we have a form that the prospective commission member fills out that tells a little bit about them and what their qualifications and why they are interested in serving. And then those can be all assembled at the council meeting and the public can see who these candidates are and what their background is by the, by having them fill out.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's kind of what I was, you know, the detail that in cover, basically we do have that form and we'll have any interested individuals fill that out, submit it. So you have, you know, some information for you when you decide over the hundreds and hundreds of people that are going to be submitting applications.
Thank you for, for bringing this back before us, because we did request some, some follow-up and some information. So thank you for bringing this back up. I just wanted to, for the record, give a clarification. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Connie wasn't able to speak on item I, which was the update on the school district, and she wanted to let you know that she was in support of that. And also, I didn't give any public comment because I have a conflict of interest because I serve on the school district oversight, oversight bond committee. So just for the record. All right. Anything further from our City Manager?
That completes it.
Thank you. We have no department recommendation action items this evening. What about department monthly reports? Airport?
I have no further reports this evening. Thank you.
Community development?
Nothing to add tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
I'll stop. Yes, Stransky?
Yes. The rails and trails that we're going to do and that Transportation has allotted money for, is there a date final set for this, for bringing it back to the city?
Dusty Doolick, you're the government director for the city. As the council aware, you're, is aware, you approved the environmental document to support the trail and we're now moving into the, the design phase that will precede the , the construction phase. The CTC has allocated the, the previously awarded grant funds and we are expecting a 30% design to be completed by our consultants soon. That will then kick off. you approved the environmental document to support the trail, and we're now moving into the design phase that will precede the construction phase. The CTC has allocated the previously awarded grant funds, and we are expecting a 30% design to be completed by our consultants soon. That will then kick off some significant public outreach meetings, likely some additional information to be shared at a council meeting setting, and then designs will be finalized over the next year, and then construction would occur the following year. So that's about essentially where we are with that project. I do not have a date certain as to when this matter will be back in front of the council, but the next time it would be, would be, you know, for informational purposes, and to gather public input.
It says on your agenda that a public outreach plan would be, and the community meeting date will be final by September. Anybody?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a deadline behind on the 30% design, and we have a meeting set with our consultants in September specifically to go over the public outreach plan. So by the end of September, we anticipate having some information to share with council. That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to engineering. Councilmember Stransky?
Is there anybody that's going to report on the engineering?
My assistant, Scott Herman, is online. Was. Is there any questions you want to direct to me? I'll do the best I can.
The things that, on preparing the easement for Redwood, for Railroad Avenue, Water Main, and the Blosser Lane rehabilitation project, and the second one is that all HMA, SMH projects, and I just wanted to know if there's a item that they're working on that I would kind of like to keep track of it, and since I don't have a computer, can you make a hard copy and leave it at the city, and I can pick it up? Thank you.
What, of those, of those specific projects?
Yes, yes, it is. It's engineering called, it's the fourth one down, five and six, all had to do with Blosser Main and HSHN. Thank you.
All right. So it appears we have nothing further for engineering, and I'll move on to the police department.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I don't really have a whole lot to add, other than what's on our monthly report. I am very excited about our staffing efforts, which hopefully by the next time we need, I will be able to report that we've got three new members on the police department. One of the sergeant spots should be filled, and then a new community service officer, as well as a new dispatcher training. They're all finalizing their background stages, and I'm looking to have those completed within the next two, three weeks. So that will add, obviously, to the force, but it also gives us some resources to alleviate some of the workload that our people have endured for the last year or so. And so everybody's excited about that, and looking forward to the new additions to the team. That's all I have.
That is good news. Thank you. All right. Public Works?
I have something.
Stransky?
I mentioned last week about the playground for the three and four or five-year-old. I would like to really commend the Public Works Group for such a clean section down at the rodeo grounds park, and even opening the restroom on Sunday, and having a nice place to go with your child to play on the little slides, and the swings, and all the things down there. They've done a really good job, and I would like that to be passed on to them. Very nice, very nice job. And my next thing is, they wanted to paint more curbs on West Commercial, Lenore, and East Valley, and the people on Lenore are upset about the painting the red on their curbing. And I would like somebody to kind of talk to me, or talk to the community that live on that street. They're not opposed, they're opposed to a red curb on one side, so everybody else has to park on the other side. And when they pick up the trash on that side, it really makes a mess for those people down there. So a suggestion has come to me about making one way on Lenore, and another one on the next street over, going one way one side, and one way the other side, and just check with them before painting the red curbs. Did everybody understand what I was saying? I want the people to understand, or the city to understand, that it's a really big deal with these people that live on Lenore, and we need to really get into it and find out what they want done with it, instead of just painting the curb on one side and letting all the traffic park on the other side.
So I will respond, Madam Mayor and Mr. Stransky. Public Works Director Scott Herman is aware of it. This is going to be a topic on our upcoming Traffic Safety Committee. We're going to be looking at it with input from the police department, engineering, fire department, our city engineer. I don't think right now there's any initiative right now to stand any red curves. We need to look at it and investigate. We're not, right now, we're still not considering one-way street alterations. That's not, you know, that's not a discussion on the table right now.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just got a message from Scott Herman. He has been trying to join in, but is having troubles with the microphone working. So I just want you to know he is there.
Vice Mayor Connie's having the same issue. Is there any message that you want to relay for him about utilities? Are there from Kathy or Brian? Do you have anything for utilities?
Well, I will jump in if Scott's having technical difficulties. Utilities has been, as you, the council has requested, you receive monthly updates, and we'll post them on the website of water production, and discussion with Scott. Now we're starting to put on the flows through the wastewater treatment plants. And now we have the complete cycle for your interest, water that enters in the system, and water that we process as a piece of the system. So that's good information there. Decreasing digging with leaks, leak repair, looking at infrastructure, making improvements at the surface water treatment facility, and then proceeding with putting together the construction documents for the groundwater resiliency project that the council proceeded with, that was submitted previously. So those are items there. Staffing is in, we're fully staffed on both of the departments, both that wastewater and water. So there's no items there, and we're just, the staff has been cycling through, taking breaks and vacations through the summer, getting ready for the fall winter activities that will focus more internally at the facilities, making improvements and routine maintenance items.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. And I'll start with Gonzalez.
What I got is, I attended the League of Cities Redwood Division meeting last Friday in Point Arena. It's been a while since I've driven to Point Arena, and it's definitely a little bit of a drive. And probably the only thing to really highlight, other than we did take a tour of just the lighthouse over there, and we did take a tour of their jetty area there, and some work they're doing. But we did have Jennifer Hogan from CalOES Hazard Mitigation Program speak about grant programs. I passed on information on to Brian, Kathy, and Dusty. And it looks like there's some grant programs out there, not only for staff training, but for some sort of hazard mitigation. So it's something the city can explore, and see if it's something we can apply for, if we meet the criteria, I guess. And that's all I really have.
Okay. Connie, are you able to speak? I know you're on the phone. No. Okay. I'll see if she sends me anything in a text.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, you're right there. Great. Wonderful. Go ahead.
Sorry, I tried to unmute myself, and then it cut out all sound for about three minutes, and I can't hear anything that's happening. So I'm sort of feel a little blind here tonight. Yes, I wanted to report that I attended the Minnesota Council of Government meeting, I think it was last Monday. Sort of losing track of time here tonight. The thing I've wanted to mention is, they are conducting a year-long study to address the transportation, unmet transportation needs throughout the county, and particular areas of interest include Brooktrails. They are hosting a free workshop this Friday in Brooktrails at the Brooktrails Community Center. I believe it starts at either 11:30 or at noon. There's information all over social media. It's been in the local, on local radio stations, and public service announcements, and it is on the MCOP website for anyone who would like to attend. I know this is Brooktrails and not Willets, but I do think this impacts Willets residents, and people in our community who try to travel between Willets and Brooktrails on Sherwood Road without real access to much in the way of public transportation. So this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak up and express what those unmet transportation needs are in and around the Willets Valley, so that MCOP can work on a plan to address those in the coming years. And the other thing I wanted to mention was that the director of MCOP spoke about, I believe it's called IJJA, the new federal program that is releasing dollars for transportation, local transportation projects, and one of the new big set of sites is for local bridge projects. And I did mention that to City Manager Bender. I know that we have been meaning for many years now to work on the bridge project over on Valley Street, and my thinking in mentioning this to him was this might be an opportunity for us to find some funding for a project that we know is going to be very costly. And I know that he is looking into that. I know he's already had discussions with Rod Wilburn. So appreciate him being diligent about that. And that is all I have to report. Thank you.
I'd like to jump in here. This is Scott. I'm finally unmuted. If you guys, sorry, apologize. And Jeremy as well. We, thank you Dolores, the key. If you guys have any questions for us again, apologies.
We're glad you're here.
If I may, I was asking, Scott, before the meeting, just give an update on the Trout Unlimited program in coordination with the city. I just, I know there's some interest on the council, and it's been a little silent on that front. So if you may, Scott.
Yes. So the week, I wasn't able to make it onto the monthly reports, but the city and Trout Unlimited, we agreed to a land access agreement to put a stream flow gauge downstream from Moore's Dam that will be in place for two years commencing May of 2024, and just to monitor the flows, the low flows, no flows, also the oxygen level, and the temperature. They have not reached out to me any further on bringing anything back for the flows. We're currently releasing approximately 25% of what's coming into Centennial, which is very equivalent to what they're asking us to do right now. So it should be a relative, a close figure to see if that's what they're, if that works for them.
Okay. Thank you for an update. All right, Gonzalez? Can't hear you.
Madge had her hand up first.
Her hand's been up for a while. That's what's confusing.
Oh, okay. Scott, basically, are we done on Blosser Lane, or is there still some work being done there? I couldn't really, it looks like one minute I didn't see striping, now I saw some striping. So I wasn't sure if that's done enough.
Yes. So we're working, we're getting ready to button it up, to a few things. All the trees are planted, the striping's in. So we'll be talking to Voodoo Lear next Monday, construction, and hopefully wrap this up very soon.
Thank you.
Stransky?
Anybody?
Yes, I have one thing to say, and now that I'm re-elected, I'm looking for a raise. So I'm going to bring that up again, and get some more money. Thank you.
Strahm?
Yes, hi. So the EDFC Economic Development, Economic Development and Financing Corporation met earlier this month, and approved a few more loans, and they also do have micro grants available to businesses. And apparently, the eligibility requirements are sort of an oxymoron, where nobody can meet them. However, they will help. So if there are any businesses in Willets that haven't taken advantage, that's something to look into. The EDFC has grant, mini grants available. And then, a week later, on August 2018, the Solid Waste Management Authority met, and one thing I wanted to kind of correct or clarify is, it's not clear whether any contract that the ESMW might enter into with a solid waste provider to do the services that ESMW used to do in-house. It's not clear whether such a contract requires approval from the jurisdictions. I asked that that be looked into. In any case, when that contract, which has not yet been drafted, when it's available, that's something that everyone's going to be looking really closely at, as to whether the private contractor, which is CNS in this case, would be providing the same level of services to the outlying areas, such as Willets, and that the other members of the ESMW board share that concern, that remote services be a very important part, and that ESMW has been not able to provide them because of very limited staffing. It looks as though, I believe it's Howard DeShiel from the county is, oh, no, actually, that's written out, no, it's Erickson from the city of Ukiah, is going to take on being kind of the administrator on behalf of ESMW board. So he will be essentially doing some of the things that our general manager would have done, just to kind of oversee the eventual contract, which will go to a private services. So that's a step forward. You have, you have someone kind of filling that role. And they mentioned that Jim Robbins, who used to be with the city of Willets, has been very helpful in locating some grant funding that ESMW has not been taken advantage of yet. that MSWA has not been taken advantage of yet. And that that's going to help fund adequate services. So there, this is still a moving target. We don't have a draft of this contract yet. It's expected before our next MSWA meeting, which is basically in mid-September. If I get it before then, I will certainly let our city council members know what, what it looks like and whether Willet's is going to get adequate services.
Madge?
Yes.
This is Greta. I just wanted to say, as you know, I've been working with Camera, Alanis up in Brook Trails and some community members to address the illegal dumping site of Dogwood Terrace up there in Brook Trails. And it's been many months now of work. And I'm, I'm very disappointed in services that we're getting from MSWA. And I regret having voted to give more money from the city of Willet to MSWA because I definitely don't think that Willet's residents or even nine side 490 residents are getting their value from that investment. Particularly the fact that the mobile hazardous waste events have been canceled and haven't happened for months and months. So I just, I, I really am hoping that in your next report, you will give us an indication of why Willet's should continue to belong to that JPA and why should we, we should continue to support MSWA when it frankly is doing nothing for our community right now.
Okay. Thank you, Greta. I, I know that the other board members share that and I have voiced that concern. They're, you know, we, we've really been suffering from not having a general manager. And, and from some of the staff, very small staff to begin with. Some of them were out with COVID and so forth. So it's been sort of a perfect storm of impacts that have, have interfered with us getting the kind of services that we are supposed to be getting. And I, I agree with you that you did remind me that the situation at the Brook Trails did also come up at the meeting. And it looks like the county transportation department is looking at closing that particular one and maybe some others of the dead-end streets that seem to be used as dumping sites. And that there is some progress being made towards fixing those problems and using, also authorizing and providing a little funding support for volunteers to do the cleanups.
Yes, we did just find out today that CHP has agreed to sign a letter of support that the county, or at least Howard DeShiel, has said that he needs in order to justify closing the road. So that's good. That means that Brook Trails Fire Department, Brook Trails Township, Brook Trails Board of Directors, CHP and Mendocino County Sheriff's have all given a nod of support to closing those cul-de-sacs. And Supervisor Mulhern and I are planning a volunteer cleanup day for sometime in September. And then the hope is that the county will then close the road shortly thereafter. So it looks like it may resolve, but it's been a horrifyingly long process. And it doesn't really let MSWA off the hook for lack of services to the county for over two years now.
Gonzalez, I saw your hand up and then it disappeared on the screen. You're okay? Okay. All right. I haven't had any committees or commissions that have met. Although, let's see, tomorrow is the Housing Summit from 9:00 to 12:00 that Gonzalez, Bender and Dusty Dooley and I will all be at in Ukiah. And then Greta had mentioned from 11:00 to 12:30. And Brook Trails is the feasibility study. I serve on MTA, so the information from that meeting is very important to us as well. Next week on Wednesday is the regular MTA meeting at 1:30. And then Greta and I also have a budget meeting on that same morning at 9:00 AM. So I'll report out on those at the next meeting. All right. For good and welfare.
Oh, Housing Summit. When is that again?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
You need a ride? Do you need a ride, Jerry?
Tomorrow, the 25th at 9:00 AM, Ukiah Convention Center.
Okay. At 9:00 AM?
Yes. You're the keynote speaker, so you're in.
I'm leaving at 8:25 if you want to come. All right. The good and wel, the good and welfare will be that we all make it there safely, safely, right? All right. Any other good and welfare? We're all healthy. We're all here on Zoom. Okay. All right. Well, with that, it is 8:45 and I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Get some rest. It looks like it's been a long week for all of us.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.